Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission for September 20th, 2016. We have September members currently here. Commissioner Hansen has been excused. We have one item on our consent calendar, which is the minutes from our September 6th meeting. Commissioner back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will you approve the minutes from our previous meeting on September 6th? This contained in the staff packet.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Sposki. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Then we have four public hearings on our agenda tonight. The first one is Enterprise Rent-A-Car, an additional use permit for vehicle rental in a CG zone. Enterprise, Matt Maras, the applicant, is the applicant present? Another time, how are you, sir?
Yeah, my name's Matt Maras. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, I'm your group operations manager. And part of my duties is to help Enterprise Rent-A-Car find, develop, and grow new rental locations. We have found a property, we are in West Jordan currently, but we did find a new property that we consider a location, a standalone building on a major road that can have the size building and parking that we need to run our business up there. There's a diagram of it. The building's approximately 2,400 square feet, and there's enough parking for about 10 rental cars at any given time, plus, you know, three to four employee parking, again, give or take, just depending on the time of year and the day of the week. But we feel the site looks great. We're asking for a conditional use permit to allow rental to be part of this property. I'll give you a little history. Enterprise is still a family-owned business, started 60 years ago in St. Louis, and the Taylor family's now the third-generation owners. The company has 8,000-plus locations in the United States and growing worldwide. The company's philosophy and founding values is that we strengthen our communities one neighborhood at a time, which is exactly what we're doing here in West Jordan. We already have a property and a location, but with the continued support and growth of West Jordan, we feel that having an A-location visible on Redwood makes a whole lot of sense for our business. The impact to the community and the surroundings is going to be minimal. We consider ourselves more retail than automotive. We just happen to have our product, the automobiles that we rent. We don't sell potato chips that need a shelf space. We need more of a parking lot to house the vehicles. But we're very good at what we do, logistically. Ninety-two percent of our vehicles are on rent at all times, so which means an average unit size of about 100 cars, at any given point in the day, you may have eight to 10 cars on the lot. Now, there are times, the Friday after Thanksgiving, when everybody returns from Grandma's house, there might be 20 cars there. Again, we're good at what we do. We have a network of drivers and employees and car props that will come pick those up and take them to a location that either needs more cars, we'll take them to the airport. But I'm going to kind of reveal the magic curtain a little bit. We don't have any enormous parking lot full of cars ready to rent at any given point in time. We do everything by appointment. Again, being a retail business, if your car's in an accident or you're taking vacation, normally you set ahead of time a reservation, you come see us, we have the car ready for you, you're in and out in about four to five minutes, hopefully if we're doing our job right, and you're on your way back to normal life, picking up groceries and going to soccer This lot, we hope that you'll approve. Obviously, we feel that it's a great location to grow our business and to continue to serve and support the West Jordan community. I'm hoping, I hope for any questions that you have or any comments that you have for me. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have one. So on the, on the Briggidin Park Drive side, it looks like there's a little bit of a dirt spot back there.
There was.
Is that not there anymore?
It's, uh, that's actually, we installed an oil-water separator for us washing our vehicles, so the water's processed properly, and that's to be paved or concreteed, and I believe it's, it's done, so it's no longer grable. It is a hard-packed surface.
That's what I was going to ask, is if that was going to turn into park, her parking lot.
That'll be a driveline. There is a wash bay, a garage in the back of that building, so that'll be a driveline for us to come out and pull cars out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sposki.
Thank you, Chairman. So as the applicant's explained, they'll be doing a business renting vehicles to the public and providing an ancillary shuttle service. So as you can see from, from the aerial, the site's fully developed. Building contains 2,376 square feet of gross floor area, in which the west half of the building will be used for office space, while the east half contains the garage, as the applicant explained, for washing and rental vehicles. The business will operate Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m., and Saturdays from 9 o'clock a.m. to 1 o'clock p.m. As far as employees go, they'll have three to four full-time employees and two to three part-time employees, so worst-case scenario, you have seven employees there at any given time. So going back to the aerial, some of the surrounding businesses and uses there, to the north, you've got the Fox Office Park, just right there on the corner of Briggidin and Redwood. To the south, on the south end of the canal, you've got Big Dog Pullman. To the east, a single-family residential, and across Redwood Road to the west is a duplex, residential duplex. So some of the site conditions, buildings, actually, it would feel better on the aerial, but setback for the buildings currently at 33 to 36 feet from the back of the sidewalk. All that area, as the applicant's explained, is now paved, so that acts as the main entrance to the complex. So the street approaches, they've got approaches both on Redwood Road and Briggidin Park Drive, each at about 28 to 29 feet wide, and those converge into kind of onto the southwest corner. That, that drive aisle is about 18 feet wide. So by city code, 18 feet isn't quite enough to qualify for a two-way driveway, so it would essentially be treated as a one-way driveway, which up until this point is, it is acted as. So going back to some of the photos, you can kind of see that, that driveway there on the, the bond photo. The parking stalls, stripings are a little bit faded, so staff is requesting that the owner restripes those to make sure that patrons can see those stalls and that parking isn't getting confused. So the parking lot itself contains 14 total spaces, 13 regular and one handicapped, which should be enough to meet the demands of the city code, which requires only nine spaces based on gross floor area and employees. So now the applicant's kind of explained some of the parking situations that cars, there could be quite a few cars on-site, but with the amount of turnover and the fact that those cars will be pretty much in and out, staff feels that it's, it should be appropriate for that site. So based on these findings and those explained in the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission grant approval of a conditional use permit for Enterprise Rent-A-Car located at 9325 South Redwood Road with the condition of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Doesn't look like it. Uh, so this is one of our public hearings for tonight, so I'll kind of introduce that process to those in attendance. And as we open the public hearing, anybody who would like to comment on this particular item would be invited up to the microphone. You would kind of give us your name and contact information, and the city staff will be there to follow up with you, any questions that you might have. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You'll hear a buzzer at the end of that three minutes, and if you would kind of wrap that up, so that we can continue on, and that'll be it. So on that, we'll open the public hearing for this item, if there is anybody who would like to comment.
Hi, I'm Kevin Wyman, I'm the owner of the property. Just to let you guys know, there is also, not only we did, we just added the oil-water separator for the inside, there's also one parking lot that, which would be city codes for parking vehicles in that area, so there should be no problem with that. It was in place in a way when we, when we did the buildup of the space, and there is a fence around all the residence, so block fence and some wood fence that was, was always been in place, so shouldn't interfere with residents on the other side, I've got a complaint, so, since I've been there, so it's a way, so just a few things to add to the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment on this? We'll close public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green.
So my comments are, I'm glad to see that somebody will put the, this piece of property to use. It's kind of been underutilized for the last couple of years when you drive down Redwood Road. It's not been the prettiest piece of property, not the ugliest one on Redwood Road, but it's good to see it's utilized, and it's a nice bit enterprise if you're going to move, you stayed in West Jordan City, so I think it, I think this will be a good use for this.
So that, do you want to go motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll do it. So based on the findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the Enterprise Rent-A-Car location located at 9325 South Redwood Road in a CG zoning district with the condition of approval listed in the staff report. Conditions of approval are one through eight as listed in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on our agenda is, I's parcel, buildings E and F, considering preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for fast-food use, restaurant use in SC2 zone. Peterson Development, Brandon Peterson is the applicant.
We're just, this is sort of under the, obviously the Highlands commercial. We've done the two buildings along 78th that are fully leased at this point, with the exception of a small portion of the building to the east. We are proposing similar buildings, and we've changed one, which was actually originally going to be a drive-through, and we, we tweaked it at one point to make it not a drive-through, and we're going back to that concept, basically for demand. It's a good center, we've, it's very well landscaped, we've got a nice fountain in there, and we're just trying to draw more and more people to Smith's as well as that middle area. And again, we're, we're lowering the size of the building and just making it sort of some kind of a drive-through. We do not have a specific tenant in mind, we're just trying to get it out there to anyone that might be interested. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
So you're saying there will not be a drive-through on the one building, or will be?
No, no, so we're, building F there, as it shows, is, is what we've, are proposing. Building E, which is to the south, will not be a drive-through, so.
So it's as it is on the site plan.
Yeah, and, and the nice thing about this property is it's so spread out, up to Smith's and so forth, there's plenty of room for cars to come, come in and out, and that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Sposki.
Thank you. So like the applicant was saying, this proposal is for the Highlands Commercial pad site E and F. It's for a preliminary site and a conditional use for a restaurant, a fast-food restaurant to accommodate the drive-through on pad site F. The drive-through would only be on pad site F. Pad site E is essentially, will be remaining the same as what was originally approved, but the changes to pad site F were significant enough to warrant a re-review from the planning commission. The, so the decision tonight from planning commission will be two separate decisions. First, on the preliminary site plan, which staff has determined that meets all of the listed criteria in the staff report, and we are recommending that planning commission approve the preliminary site plan with the five conditions listed in the staff report. Staff is also recommending that the conditional use, that planning commission approve the conditional use for the fast-food restaurant, specifically on pad site F, with the five conditions listed in the report as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All in favor tonight? Uh, then we'll open the public hearing, if there's anybody who would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I have to tell you, I just think it's ironic, we have to have a conditional use permit, put a fast-food restaurant in the shopping center. It's just, that almost, that almost boggles my mind, actually, because, you know, every, every shopping center's got a fast-food restaurant, never mind.
Was this the one that actually could have been administrative, but because we were hearing the preliminary? So it could have been an administrative conditional.
I know, but I just don't think it's.
I'm sorry. I think I might agree with you on that one.
If I could comment, just some, some historical background, the reason why that was baked into the code years ago was, I forget which restaurant it was, but typically, fast-food restaurants have a drive-through, and it was right next to a neighbor, neighbor's property, residential property, and, and so that's, that's why it got baked into the code, because it was.
The speaker, that too noisy.
You got it, yeah. So that's why, I think originally it was a planning commission, you know, a, a conditional use permit, and then it was downgraded to administrative conditional use permit simply for reasons like tonight. So there is good cause, but typically, you know, you would never see this.
Thanks.
Well, having sat through the DRC meeting, I found that this, that, uh, it was a, a great situation and the, and the way things lay out and everything, I'm, I'm not opposed at all in the fact I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Based on the positive findings set forth in the staff report and information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the Highlands Commercial pad site E and F preliminary plant, site plan, where the property is located at 7786 South and 7724 South, 5600 West, in a SC-2 zoning district with the following conditions, and there are five conditions.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hyner, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion of the motion? Very good, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Be the conditional use to.
Here I'll do it. Based on the reading of the staff report and the evidence and explanations discussed, perceived in the meeting today, I move the planning commission approve the conditional use permit to allow a fast-food restaurant located at 7724 South, 5600 West, in an SC2 zoning, the conditions one through five is listed in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Hyner. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on our agenda is the Loneview West subdivision, considering a preliminary subdivision plan, 18 lots on 501 acres in R18D zone. Peterson Development, Rick Barnes, the applicant.
Well, I'm not picked for it, but he sent me.
Okay.
Brandon Peterson, again with Peterson Development. I thought I would try to kill two birds with one stone, stone, so to speak. He knew I was coming in here tonight. Basically, what we've done is just tried to adhere to what's allowed in, in this subdivision, minimum lot size. We haven't overtaken, extended anything. We'll have to do a masonry wall along the six-foot masonry, or some kind of wall along the, the thoroughfares and so forth, but I don't know if I, if you have any questions for me on, on this subdivision. It's pretty basic, but happy to try to answer anything for you.
Any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it.
Well, I do have one, one question.
Commissioner Hyner.
You do, you have ingress and egress on 80, ingress and e, on 8200, and egress on the other end there. And lucky that some of that flat, it doesn't.
The access through into this would be dependent upon Loneview South being built, Loneview, and I'll go over that when I talk about that.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Sposki.
And so, this should be fairly familiar to the planning commission, the ZO change before you a few months ago, and it's a five-acre piece of property on 282 and 6700 West that is owned by the LDS Church, or Peterson purchased from the LDS Church. To the north is the Highlands. This five-acre parcel is not part of the Highlands' development, it's just as a traditional Euclidian zone of R18E. The E-size house was put in, the council, they wanted to see a larger home size than this, and that kind of matches what they've been doing out on the, the west side with the larger E-size homes. Everything to the south is part of Jordan Hills villages, is all the planned community zone, and then the property to the west is the 50-acre school site that right now is under development by Boyer Company, they sold it, I think, a month or so ago, and so, but the piece on the corner of 67 and 82, the 10-acre piece will be retained as a, a school site, by the school district. Of course, the land use map, the, that meeting was changed to medium-density residential. You can see, I just kind of explained the surrounding, and to answer Bill's question more specifically, you can see both of the access roads just end in a field right now. Well, that won't be the case, because the piece to the east right now is Loneview South, Phase One, which has, I believe, been recorded, I think either today or tomorrow, and so the, the one site will provide the sub-road to that, and the other sub-road will be on a future phase of, of Loneview South, and so this project may develop, will be dependent upon the construction of Loneview South, but Peterson also is the developer on both projects. I don't know what their timeframe for final approval is on the development, but, you know, they're, they're fully aware, they're not, they're, they're driving or they're in control of the accesses to their property, and so it'll be nineteen, nineteen, 19, 8,000 square foot lots, there'll be retention upon, as you can see at the northeast corner there, there'll be property dedicated on the corner of 8200, 6700, for a future roundabout, which seems to be the theme of 8200 South, seems to be roundabout way in West Jordan, and so our traffic engineer didn't want to miss an intersection, and so there'll be one, there'll be a roundabout there in the future also. Staff is, in the staff report is indicated, meets all the findings for subdivision approval and recommends a preliminary approval of this development this time.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So this, this really can't go in until the rest of the, the other subdivision's built for access, then?
Yeah, they have to build the substrate, so.
Lord.
But I think Loneview South is, is how much higher, it's a much higher priority for the Petersons to have, getting Loneview South up and going as this is.
Mr. Sposki.
Thank you. I'm just curious, like, why, why the sub-road is being left when it's only like one lot width? Is there a reason for that? Is there like extensive cost to tie it into that road that's to the north? Or are they just?
Well, that, that's part of Loneview South, that's Phase Three of Loneview South, and so the road is already plotted on that, the preliminary platform on Loneview South, and so they, they could build it if they wanted to build this subdivision at any time, because the Petersons are in full control of their property, so.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Uh, then we'll open up this one in the public as well, if there's anybody who would like to comment on this item. I'm guessing everybody's here for the last item, man, but we're running out of things to talk about. Uh, okay, then we'll close public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green.
I move, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, that the, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Loneview West, the property located approximately 8174 South, 6540 West, subject to conditions one through seven, as listed in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Last item on our agenda tonight is the colleges at Apple Cross, considering that a general plan land use amendment for 7.95 acres, showing the commercial to be residential, and a rezone from SC2 to PRD. Hamlet Development, Michael Brodsky, the applicant, looks like he's got a show.
Good evening. Michael Brodsky, I'm at 308 East, 4,500,000 Merit. I am the owner of Hamlet Homes and Hamlet Development. We are, what we're proposing is not just a subdivision development, but rather, we're also going to be building the houses. And your staff report contains some of the samples of the homes we're building. If you don't mind, I'm just going to put up on display a couple of them to give you a sense of this sort of architecture. We're asking for a rezone on approximately an eight-acre property to be able to construct 38 single-family detached homes and leave the frontage along 7800 South for future development of a commercial strip. The property has been marketed as a commercial property for many years, very unsuccessfully. The advent of Jordan Landing kind of put a quash on some of these isolated parcels like this, and they've, they've, the property owners have had quite a bit of difficulty trying to find another use for the property. There are some unique aspects to the subdivision plan that we're suggesting. The, the lots are fully landscaped, front, rear, side yards. This would be part of a homeowners association, so that the open space, the private roads, the couple, the two parks, as well as the landscape on each of the individual lots would be maintained by the homeowners association. The books I'm passing out are little more than the site plan you see here, the landscape plan, and samples of the architecture that we're proposing to construct. We designed the housing configuration so that the driveways are paired in an effort to provide even more green space along the roads. We have a landscape architect who's very carefully designed landscaping at all of the high-impact areas, so as you drive into the community, you're confronted with more densely landscaped areas at the high-visibility impact areas. We presented this concept to the neighbors. We sent out notices to the surrounding neighborhood and met with them here last week. We wanted to listen to their concerns and their input, and frankly, there was a, a number of good suggestions that we got. One of them was a concern about connectivity from Woodcove out to 78 South right now. right now. The kids, their children don't have a really good route to get from Wood Cove out to seventy-eight hundred. They have been using the Diamond Family property as a pathway. We're proposing connectivity between our sidewalks and our community that would give them the opportunity to be able to walk to school on a shorter and safer route. The community is fenced, according to your ordinance. The separation between the residential and the commercial is separated by a precast concrete wall. The area along the canal would be separated with a six-foot-high vinyl fence. The area that meets the existing Wood Cove, we would not fence that because we're backyards of residential, we're going backyards to residential. And there are a couple of instances where our park actually butts their neighborhoods and their parks but our neighborhoods. I just want to point out that Hamlet Homes has been a builder in northern Utah now for over twenty-two years. I started the company in nineteen ninety-four. This would not be our first neighborhood in West Jordan. We've built a couple of other communities here. We've built plus than thirty-five hundred homes in the twenty-two years since we've been building homes in Utah. We have a lot of experience with the kind of infill that this represents. And we've also built a combination of different neighborhoods, sub-town homes, also a number of greenfield communities, single-family detached. I think I've covered most of the points that I had here. Could I answer any specific questions the planning commission might have?
Mr. Back?
Oh, thank you. And thank you for your presentation and wanting to contribute to West Jordan. Just curious on this report that you gave us and also looking over the staff report, with the fifteen, fifteen-foot buffer that is on the perimeter of the proposed subdivision and also with the park, understanding that this doesn't need to be comprehensive at this point, I think it would help in our discussion if you would let us know what you're planning on doing with the open space on both ends. I know that there's a canal open space, but are you planning on doing anything with that? Understanding that it's a canal, but are you planning on doing anything on that side? And what exactly would the open space, do you have any vision of what the open space should be on the outside too?
Absolutely. Great question. So, on the canal side, we would fence and separate the canal from the property. We'd leave, there's a maintenance road right now, the canal easement. We'd leave that on the canal side. We see two distinct uses of these parks. In one park, we would simply do some park benches, you know, the doggy stations, and of course, it would be fenced in as well. The second park would contain a recreation facility for the younger children, so we'd see setting it up with a variety of different playground equipment.
Great, thank you. And then with the fifteen-foot buffer?
I'm sorry. Right now, we're suggesting the buffer be on the residential side with the wall, the masonry wall being along the commercial property line. If the, if staff or council had a different vision of it, it could go either way.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Aron?
I was just wondering, what demographic are you anticipating with a project like this?
Expect these homes to sell on a mid-three-hundred-thousand-dollar price range and a little bit above that. Excuse me. The homes that we're suggesting here would range in size from about twenty-six hundred to thirty-two hundred square feet. We see it as a family community, thirty-to-forty-year-old initially, young children, some preschool and some elementary school ages. General speaking, this is a family neighborhood.
Thank you.
Why are you leaving the commercial lots right along seventy-eight border in the neighborhood?
First off, I think it's a great transition to buffer the residential from the high traffic on seventy-eight south. As a trend, the neighborhood too provides a nice buffer because the residential, the traffic impact that the residential will generate versus the commercial that's currently zoned on it is two to three times less than what the commercial zone would normally generate. So, the, the commercial, the commercial along seventy-eight south provides a very nice buffer between the traffic in our neighborhood.
Might be a good buffer, but it sounds like a strange entryway to my neighborhood. If I'm coming home at night and Arby's is my welcome home sign.
Well, I can't tell you for sure what type of use that commercial would be, but I'd say it is a neighborhood commercial space. It would have some, you know, smaller shops. The real estate agents that I'm working with suggest that they think they can get a Starbucks as a, for example, that's the kind of tent that they'd like to see in there.
I like it. I like the buffer on seventy-eight because seventy-eight south is technically a commercial corridor in our city. I don't know, I would prefer to have that boundary rather than have a sound wall in my backyard that, you know, is catching all the noise from seventy-eight. Personally, I'd prefer to have something.
Any other questions for the public? I think that's it. Thank you. Mr. Aron?
So, currently, the site is zoned SC two and has been some type of commercial zone since the late seventies where the Cow Ranch is, it was first safely built there in the late seventies. I think the thought was at the time that the commercial would go to the west and, you know, at that day and age, commercial used to be more of a strip development along major arterial streets, which seventy-eight hundred south was or becoming in West Jordan at that time. And as Mr. Brodsky said, the property, and I've witnessed, it's been for sale for at least a decade that I know of, is a commercial property with no takers. And so, the last couple of years, it's been leased out to a crop farmer who's grown chili peppers and pumpkins and corn and stuff like that. But, you know, bear in mind, this was agriculture at one time and it has been, has had a commercial land use designation and zoning for decades. It just hasn't, the right tenant has not come along. You know, if they would have, it would have been probably a permanent use to develop the site. And in the general plan, it talks about, you know, confining commercial development to no one's in the city. It seems to have been, it seems to be fairly successful at that in the city. And this is, of course, not, not anything scientific, it's just something that, you know, it's more what is being developed at the site. You can see the sizes of the commercial nodes, thirty-two hundred seems to be a commercial load, a little bit larger than twenty-seven hundred west. Of course, you know, where two arterial streets intersect, the node gets larger. But you can see that there's, there's kind of a piece between the nodes that, you know, we consider mid-block commercial, which really is struggling everywhere right now. A lot of commercial developers like to be at the intersections. You know, you can see this up and down State Street, Redwood Road, the struggles that they have with mid-block commercial because everyone wants to be at the intersections. And so, you know, take this for what it's worth, but it definitely is a mid-block piece that seems to be surrounded by residential. Now, with the concept plan that Mr. Brodsky submitted, you can see his density would be four point seven units per acre, which is just a little bit higher than Wood Cove, which was developed probably twenty-five, thirty years ago. Jordan Point Two is much higher, it's a much smaller lawn development than seven point one. And then across the street is about one unit per acre less, Strawberry Place and Sunset Cove. So, it's in, it certainly does meet the median density designation that he has applied for, less than five units per acre. It's more on the high end than the low end, but it is within the designation. One thing we also need to keep in mind is the Diamond Family has self-initiated their own down zone here. A lot of times, cities will do that and get sued and get in trouble, but this is actually being done by their own property owner. And so, so I wouldn't say that, you know, four point seven units is, I think that would be much more compatible than any type of commercial that could go in there next to residential uses. And of course, Mr. Brodsky won over his site plan very well. This is just a color rendition that is, of course, on the floor they're showing. You know, there will be yards associated with these and open spaces. I do like his willingness to put connectivity between the two neighborhoods. That's always a good thing, pedestrian connectivity, I should say, for people, you know, that instead of a two-mile trip, now makes it a quarter-mile trip. So, it makes a lot of sense. And so, I'm glad that he's willing to do that. And then, of course, these are just more homes that Mr. Brodsky has shown there. You know, with that in mind, based on the staff report, staff supports this and recommends the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council for approval of this land use map amendment and zone change.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Guess not. Then we'll open this meeting up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this item, the time is now yours.
Hi, I'm Shelley Walters. I am a resident of Wood Cove Park, and I am on the homeowners board, so I'm representing them tonight. And we appreciate the opportunity to meet with these gentlemen last week and see their plans. We feel that this development is a positive for our neighborhood. We have been here for over thirty years, and we have very large parks that we maintain. We have, I don't know the exact number of acres that we have of parks. The way that we maintain those is the canal water. We have water rights that were purchased to take care of that acreage. The reason the parks were put in in the first place was because in nineteen eighty-something, when interest rates were sixteen percent, we were able to get funding for that to be built, the Wood family, based on so many acres of green acreage, open space, to so many homes, and we could get federal funding or financing. So, that's what happened. We have, like I said, the canal water, we have a pump, and that is adjacent to this development. Our concern is that we've got to have access to the pump. The weir cannot be moved, from my understanding. There are only so many weirs that are available on that canal. So much space has to be permitted between those, from my understanding. And so, we cannot move that, and we don't have a definite plan with these gentlemen how we're going to make this work so that we, if we need to make repairs to our pump or we have a problem with our pump, that we have access to that so that we can maintain our parks.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to comment on this item? Doesn't look like it, so we'll close the public hearing. And if you would like to address any concerns that were brought up there?
I apologize for not bringing it up myself. I'm aware of the irrigation water. In fact, there is an easement that runs between properties that contains the piping for that canal, I'm sorry, for the irrigation. We're well aware of it, and we intend that we will design into our neighborhood so that they have access to the pumps in perpetuity. There's no reason why that would not continue.
Thank you. Sure. Commissioner Skoski?
I'd just like to say how much I like this plan. I like that there's open space on both sides of it. I really like connectivity between seventy-eight or between the existing subdivision. I like to see that, that there's been provision for that and that the pedestrian access. I think, you know, if you look at the overall plan as well, it matches well with the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. I think it has a really good flow and it just kind of continues. It adds value to the city and, yeah, really impressed with the plan. Good job.
Mr. Green?
I semi-agree with you on this one. It looks like it's an okay plan, but I don't like the PRD zone being used for this. As we look at the city ordinance, the PRD zone says it's supposed to be the intended fifty-acre development. Normally...
No, it's a PC.
Is the PC fifty and the PRD?
PRD is whatever the planning commission does.
Okay. This one just doesn't seem big enough to be a PRD. You know, it's a, it's a, PRDs would have meant for large-scale developments. I can tell you where I have the heartburn with the code is that, I'm not, I mean, although they call it the cottages at Apple Cove, I'm not sure that I've seen a consistent opinion yet. I haven't seen a balanced and coordinated mix of uses. And the staff report says, well, it's because of the small side that it's not practical. Well, it's not practical, it doesn't meet the code, as far as I'm concerned. It also says that we're supposed to encourage a broad range of housing types, and because of the cap and rate ordinance, we can only build single-family homes. I know we had an ordinance in place that allowed for some townhomes and those kind of things in PRD if we, and that's why we, why we have the ordinance in place. So, I disagree with that one. I know it's tried to be used for infill, we talked about that before, we talked about having an infill ordinance, and we actually presented a draft of the city that never, never got very far on an infill zone the last time we dealt with PRD zoning over there and wherever. I think, I don't remember which one, which property it was, but I just don't like using the PRD zoning for this. I don't think it meets the intent of the PRD zone.
Mr. Back?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can certainly see where Commissioners Skoski and Green are coming from. In the pre-meeting too, I, at first blush, it seemed slightly awkward, but now, although I'll miss the local grown peppers, it is sandwiched between residential and commercial and kind of a mixed use, so to speak, with the surrounding area, a quick dinner, shops, sound barrier, safety. So, I can see how that would work, especially as an infill project, trying to put the land to the best and highest use. So, I appreciate the code being read so that we can understand that, especially as we notice this is a quasi-judicial matter with the findings of facts. But I would, I don't know at this point what more we can do in that, in that area. Perhaps were you going to speak to that? I was presuming what your experience, I'd love to hear what you have to say if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. See, I disagree. I think this is a perfect opportunity to use a PRD zone and for a couple of reasons. PRD allows a little bit more flexibility in design. It allows a little bit more flexibility. And where, where you're talking about a large scale, I think this is a... and where, where you're talking about a large scale, I think this is a perfect use of it because if you take into account the large scale of the area around it, with the many things that are going on around it, the PRD can, can make use of an area like this that's awkward. And it is an awkward area, it's got all sorts of uses around it, but I, I love that. As our city gets tighter, as we get more, more and more people moving in, we're going to need lots like this that are densified, and infill projects are the perfect place for those densified lots. Where you have, we're looking for mix of uses, and if, if you add that in, you've got cow ranch right there, you've got the restaurants and options right along Seventy-Eight Hundred South, and then adjacent to it, you have large expansive open space with also densified houses. But it, it kind of, I feel like it adds to the area. It's not another of the same, it's, it gives many uses to the area, and I like that about it.
Well, I appreciate what you say. I, we can't say that cow ranch is part of this zone and that's part of the mixed use for the PRD.
It's not, it's not. But PRD is kind of a, to me, it's my own personal view of PRD, but PRD is kind of what you use when there's not really a great definition for the area, like how you're going to use it. Because a general residential zoning would limit what they can do in that area, where PRD allows a little bit more flexibility for its use, so...
If the PRD was designed for infill, this is where I'm coming from, is if the PRD was designed for infill, it would say it's designed for infill. It doesn't, it says it's for large-scale projects. Seven acres doesn't meet the definition of any sort of large-scale project.
Define for me a large-scale project?
Well, I would say that fifty acres, like what PC requires, is a large-scale project.
But it doesn't say fifty acres.
No, it doesn't.
One time, sorry.
But I would say, I would say twenty-five, thirty, fifty acres is a large-scale project, not seven. So, it's, it could be just in the eye of the beholder, and def, you know, what we see is definitions, but I, I just don't see how this provides any sort of balance of mixed uses, range of housing type, anything that the ordinance requires for PRD. So, I just think we're trying to use the PRD ordinance for an infill because we don't have an infill ordinance, and, and we need to figure out what our infill ordinance ought to be and not use the PRD for it. That's where I'm coming from.
Last, go ahead, last comment.
I agree with you, we need an infill ordinance, but since we don't have an infill ordinance currently, it is subjective, and I think that the PRD fits for this particular development because we don't have an infill ordinance.
Mr. Hiner?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I like the project too. I like the fact that it does have the buffer off of Seventy-Eight that sets back, and it gives the opportunity to do more commercial front, and it just, it just has a lot of other options, and I, I like the project. The only, one thing that does concern me is parking when you, when you have that high density. As the kids get older, they start buying cars, and they, the cars end up in the streets, and, and so, you have a difficulty with parking with these types of high-density subdivisions. But other than that, I, I like it.
Would the parking typically be addressed to CCR?
I suppose it could be.
No, no on-street parking here or something like that, is what I think they're going to see those. So, I guess it's possible to mitigate that.
It does say that it'll be maintained by an HOA through to CCR.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Mr. Heiner, we need to resurrect that infill ordinance.
Do we know that, I appreciate the work that you provided earlier on, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to try to address that, but we'll, we'll bring that back.
Mr. Skosky?
Based on the finding set forth in the staff report upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map for community commercial, from community commercial to median density residential for approximately seven-point-nine-five acres of property located at two-seven-three-five west, seventy-eight-zero-zero south.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Skosky, second by Commissioner Heiner. Any discussion to the motion? Doesn't look like it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
And based on the finding set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone the property located at two-seven-three-five west, seventy-eight hundred south, from SC two Community Shopping Center to PRD planned residential development zone.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Skosky, second by Commissioner Heiner. Discussion to that motion. Doesn't look like it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. This concludes our agenda for this evening. If there's any other things to talk about, all right, we entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Commissioner Park to adjourn. If there's no opposition to that, we stand adjourned until October fourth. Thank you.